So Hillary will be chairing this evening. Chairman, you may start the meeting.
Hey, good evening. Zoning Board of Adjustment Meeting will please come to order. Adequate notice of this meeting was provided in the following ways. Notice published in the Courier-News. Notice published on the Bolton Board in the Municipal Building. Notice made available to the Township Clerk. Notice sent to the Courier-News and the Star Ledger. With a clerk, please call the role.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Regio?
Yes.
Mr. Blount?
Yes.
Mr. Hadaka?
Yeah.
Mr. Mitterondo?
Yeah.
Mr. Ali?
Yeah.
And Mr. Chairman Hillary?
Here.
Okay.
Well, everyone, please stand for the salute to the flag, please. To the flag of the United States of America. To the flag of the United States of America, who stands in one nation, indivisible, just as. Okay, Mr. Caneely, are there any changes on tonight's agenda?
Yes, sir. The add-in door application on Hose Lane is adjourned until October twenty-fourth with no further notice. The on-switch application in New England Avenue is adjourned until October twenty-fourth with no further notice. The face field application on Seventh Avenue is adjourned until October twenty-fourth with no further notice. Finally, the well-sprained adult daycare on Hose Lane is adjourned until November fourteenth with no further notice. Those are all the changes that I have.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna go to item number five. Two-four dash ZB dash nineteen B. Sushma Sharma.
Is Sushma Sharma present?
Yes, I am.
Okay, I need to swear you in. Could you raise your right hand? Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give should be true?
Yes.
Okay, put your hand down, give us your name and address, and explain to the board why you're here.
Uh, my name is Sushma Sharma. The address is One Brook Hollow Road. Piscataway, New Jersey, zero eight eight five four. And I'm here to, uh, for the variance which I've applied for a shed.
Do you also want to keep an existing fence and accessory structures?
That's right, yes.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, you may want to talk to Mr. Mizrahi about this report.
Yes, good evening, everybody. So essentially, there are three accessory structures constituting about two-hundred-and-forty square feet of area. I had someone representing the applicant stop by our office. They indicated a willingness to remove accessory structures as the board saw fit to reduce the overage on lot coverage. Uh, there's a few items in the staff report, including a condition that the fence may remain until it is ever replaced, repaired, or removed. That the fence must be installed in a conforming location. Uh, and all remaining accessory structures shall receive applicable permits and approvals from the Building Department. So if the applicant is agreeable to the terms laid out in the, uh, staff memo, I believe we can determine which accessory structures we'd like to have remain.
Ms. Sharma, are you agreeable with what Mr. Mizrahi wrote in this report?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Mizrahi, do you have a recommendation?
Tim, you're breaking up again.
Mr. Mizrahi, do you have, uh, any advice on the accessory structures?
Yes, according to my notes, should be was supposed to be removed on the thirty-first of August. Did that happen?
Yes, it is, it has.
Okay, so that reduces... That reduces the building coverage by eighty-five square feet. Uh, and there was also a freestanding covered roof attached to that shed. Was that also removed?
Is it, is it the gazebo you're talking about? There is one gazebo type?
The gazebo that's attached to the shed.
No, the gazebo has not been removed. It's there. The shed behind the gazebo has been removed.
Okay, so that means there's two remaining non-conforming accessory structures uh, with approximate square footage. So if the board would like to see one removed, that would greatly reduce the amount of overage on the building coverage for the lot. So that, that would be my, my recommendation.
So you're recommending that one additional be removed?
Yes.
Ms. Sharma, are you agreeable to removing another shed?
The shed? There are two, uh, uh, as per Jonathan, what he explained, there are two more, two more structures, right? One has been, one has been removed out of the three, so there are only two more. One is the gazebo and one is the shed or shed where we put in our, uh, what do you say, all the tools and everything, we have kept the tools and everything. So there are only two structures now.
So would you be agreeable to removing the gazebo?
Uh, okay. If you... I'm not sure on that because that's the place where we sit. But anyways, yes, if you say so, that it has to be removed. So we are, we can remove the shed where we have kept our tools. I don't know, any one of them has to be removed.
Only, only one would have to be removed. I, I think if you have tools, it's okay to keep the, the shed. It's in a non-conforming location, so you'd have to agree that if the shed needs to be replaced, that you would locate it in a conforming location.
Yes.
But the gazebo would, would reduce the amount of building coverage that you have. So I would recommend that that be removed.
Okay.
If they've removed the gazebo and they've already removed the shed B, can you tell us what the lot coverage would be?
Um, I could calculate that again, but it would take me a moment.
If the board is agreeable, we can, uh, get that figured tomorrow.
I would really appreciate if I'm, uh, allowed to keep both of them so that, but whatever the board says, I'll agree to that.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, you may want to open it to the public to see if any members of the public want to speak.
Okay, uh, I was gonna open up to the board. Any board members have any questions or comments? Anyone from the public have any questions or comments?
No one, Chairman.
Okay, uh, public portion is closed. I, uh, make a motion to approve this application. Can I get a second?
I'll a second.
Okay. Mr. Hillary?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Regio?
Yes.
Mr. Blount?
Yes.
Mr. Hadaka?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
And Mr. Ali?
Yes.
Ms. Chairman, your application's been approved as long as you remove the gazebo and you've already removed the shed. We will memorialize it in a written document at our next meeting and send that to you.
Okay.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, moving on to item six.
I can leave the meeting now?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Moving on to item number six. Two-four dash ZB dash forty-four V, William Bender.
Is Mr. Bender present?
Right here.
Mr. Bender, I need to swear you in. Are you raising your right hand? Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give should be true?
Yes.
Thank you. Your name and address, please?
William Bender, Nine Harmony Street, Piscataway, New Jersey, oh-eight-eight-five-four. I'm requesting the granting of a bulk variance for my fence.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mizrahi has reported his time.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I want to clarify one or two points, uh, Mr. Bender. This is an existing fence that you're trying to retain? Fantastic. Have you spoken with your neighbor at fourteen Linden Street?
I sent him a letter out, but I'm in Florida, so I'm not there.
Okay, I understand.
In Florida right now, so.
I understand.
Yeah.
Um, my concern with this application was the visibility of the neighbor coming out of the driveway, creating a safety concern. My recommendation, or my, uh, my thought was if the fence was brought in to be in line with the side of your dwelling, that would provide a safer site triangle for, uh, for the neighborhood.
No one's ever said anything to me, so. You know, been there for thirty-six years.
Okay.
So, I mean, again, um, yeah, that's not seeking relief, though. If I pull it all the way up to the line of my house, then I gotta move the whole fence, which is what I'm trying to seek relief from.
It would still be in a non-conforming location.
I, I'm not sure what you're saying.
Uh, by moving the fence to be in line with the house, we're still, it would still be, uh, relief from the, uh, total distance it would need to be. So it's, it, we're meeting in the middle. Well...
You're required to have thirty-five feet and they're proposing nineteen feet. That's what he means by relief.
Okay, I don't know how many feet it is right now to the street. Uh, again, I'm not there, so, uh, that fence has been there since I bought the house in eighty-eight, so I just replaced it with a different fence. So I, I don't know what the regulations were originally. Um, but again, my whole purpose was to try to not move the fence. That's why I'm trying to go through the variance here with you folks. So I, I don't know what else to say.
Okay, I don't, I don't have any... To prove your case, you need to provide certain proofs by the board should you miss. So far, you haven't provided those proofs, and if the board wanted to, they could deny the application because you hadn't provided any evidence.
Evidence of what in particular? What are you speaking of?
Uh, you need to justify the variance that you are seeking, and to do that, you have to provide the board with evidence, not just that you want it.
Evidence, okay. Um, I don't know, I tried to follow all the steps that were laid out. I'm not sure exactly when you say evidence, what, what else I was missing here.
You have to provide certain justifications under the land use law to justify granting a variance.
Uh, again, I, I, I notified everybody. I, I don't know what else, you know. The fence was there, I just replaced it. I notified all the neighbors, nobody has any problems with it. Um, there, it's not a, it's not a line-of-sight issue on the corner, as I've been told from the memorandum from the zoning board. So I don't know what else, what else I was should, should have done, or what I could have done, or what I can do. I, I'm at a loss to understand that, I guess.
Did, did you get a fence permit to replace the old fence?
Uh, no, I did not. So again, that's why this whole thing ensued.
Okay, the contract, did the contractor say?
It was a contractor, it was a contractor, but I didn't know I needed another, um, uh, permit when the fence was already there and I just replaced it. So that's why, that was the disconnect I had. I did not realize that it had to be re-permitted.
Underzoning, if you have something that's non-conforming and you remove it, then you lose that grandfathering. If you had repaired it, then it was pre-existing. That isn't what you did. You took the old one down and put a new one up.
Different fence, chain link.
Yeah, I'm surprised the contractor didn't say something to you.
Okay.
Again...
A cha- a chain link would be allowed, though. Four-foot chain link, your corner is allowed to the property line. You put a solid fence up. That's where the issue was.
Okay. Um, okay, um, well, that's part of the relief on here that I'm looking at the notice form. Um, proposed, um, uh, six-foot vinyl fence located along the front, uh, yard property line and within the front yard setback. Uh, proposed. That's what's on here, twenty-one dash six-one-nineteen dot, dot three, dot, dot one. Um, so I guess I'm just a little confused as to what you're saying and what I'm, what I was supposed to do. I thought I followed everything.
Let me try to help you out. You had a chain link fence, you just heard from Laura, that was conforming to the ordinance.
Right.
Four-feet high and it was open. Now you've got a six-foot-high fence, solid.
Right.
Uh, in the same location. The problem is that one does not conform the ordinance. You wanna think about what was offered. Do you move the fence, uh, what was it, to nineteen feet from the right way?
Yeah.
And as opposed to thirty-five feet, which is what the ordinance requires. It's like a half a loaf here and you might want to consider it. I don't think it's a big project to move that fence.
Well, if it's thirty-five...
No, not what we're asking for. We're asking for nineteen feet.
Okay, nineteen feet would take it to the line of the house? Is that what you stated prior?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm still moving the fence. Alright, so that's pretty much where I started here. Um, that I had to move the fence and try to get a variance, I didn't have to move the fence.
But what you don't understand is what the board attorney said to you is if it's rejected, you have to eliminate it altogether.
Right, I understand that. I, that I understand now. Uh, if it's thirty-five feet, there is no fence. It's gotta all come down because...
No, forget the thirty-five. We're talking about nineteen feet.
Right, but that's why I'm here to move it from, you're saying, from the thirty-five to the nineteen proposed instead of thirty-five, so, which is the zone.
The board has, has offered you a compromise.
Okay, nineteen, okay, uh, right. Um, hmm, okay. Uh, if that's all that can be offered to me, I, I don't know what else to say, and I guess that's what you guys or you folks are saying, so. Okay, um. I guess I, I have to settle for that, then. It's fine. Good.
Okay. Okay. Does any board members have any questions or comments? Okay, anyone from the public have any questions or comments?
No one, Chairman.
Okay, I make a motion to approve this application. I need a second?
I'll a second.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Regio?
Yes.
Mr. Blount?
Yes.
Mr. Hadaka?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
Mr. Ali?
Yes.
And Chairman Hillary?
Yes.
Your application has been approved as amended. We will prepare a written document and submit the document to you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move on to item number nine. Twenty-four dash CB dash forty-one B, Venture Net Properties LLC.
Uh, good evening, members of the board, board professionals. My name is Tim Arch. I'm an attorney licensed in the state of New Jersey. I'm here representing, uh, Venture Net. Uh, this is for a, a property located at four-twenty-five Hose Lane. Uh, you may recall approximately five months ago, we were in front of you and you were gracious enough to grant us a, uh, temporary zoning permit um, to utilize one of the two existing buildings that are on the site uh, to store, uh, materials. Uh, just to, to remind you, uh, my client is a, uh, home furnishing, uh, company. Um, they want to use this property at four-twenty-five Hose Lane as their North American headquarters. Um, they, you know, they, they sell, uh, uh, home furnishing, uh, furniture, things of that nature. Um, we want to ultimately, uh, uh, turn that property into, uh, not only their headquarters, but also a showroom, um, and, uh, uh, a whole bunch of different site improvements, sort of similar to the FW Web, um, uh, building, if you're familiar with that in Piscataway. Um, we are diligently working on that site plan. Uh, we, our engineers are Menlo engineers. Uh, they, uh, hope to be done, the, the actual full site plan drawings within about a month's time. Uh, so we're confident that we're gonna be able to submit our full site plan uh, application, uh, before the end of the year. Um, but the delay was, uh, because of the new twenty-twenty-three flood hazard rules. We had to do all new surveying, uh, of the site, flood hazard surveying, and that, that just took longer than what was expected. Um, so we're asking tonight, uh, essentially for two things. Number one is we're asking for an extension of that six-month temporary use. Um, that way, it'll allow us to have that additional time to get our full site plan in. Uh, again, we feel that we're gonna be, we're confident we're gonna get it in before the end of the year. But that six months gives us a bit of a buffer for the staff to then review it and for us to actually have a hearing within that time period. Um, so that's the, that's ask number one. The other ask is you had allowed us to, there's two existing buildings, building one and building two. You had allowed us at the, uh, with the original temporary use, uh, uh, permit to do internal fit-outs of building number two and use that to store product. Uh, we're not moving anything back and forth on the site. We're just storing our product there and doing an internal fit-out of the building. And we've done that, uh, to building number two, uh, and we were storing our product there now. Um, the reasoning for that was the sa- uh, was what it was back five months ago, which is obviously we're, we're trying to make the most efficient use of time and, and do things on the site that we can hopefully do, uh, at our own risk, obviously. Um, uh, before, before we get in front of you for site, for full site plan approval. So that's all been done. Uh, so we're asking you if you would consider extending that temporary use to building number one and allow us to do a fit-out, an internal fit-out of building number one, and to be able to statically store materials there as well during this time period, uh, while we're getting our site plan, uh, in front of the board. Uh, we recognize, my client recognizes that if you were to grant that, it would be entirely at our own risk, uh, such that if you denied our site plan, or if you, uh, if the board required, or the board professionals required amendments to our site that affects something that we've already installed or put in or built, it would be our, you know, we would be on the dime to, to change that and to, and to amend it, and that might just be, uh, potentially money wasted, and my client is aware of that. Um, so we have two staff reports, and I think we can address all of the questions in the staff reports. And I do have only one witness, and that is Mr., um, uh, James, uh, 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 Chen, who is here. Uh, he is our architect, uh, he's also here as a representative of Venture Net. Um, and so I would ask if we can have him sworn in. I think we can go through the reports fairly quickly, and, uh, that's all I got.
Mr. Chen, could you raise your right hand? For the testimony you're about to give to me the truth.
Yes, I do.
Okay, thank you. Uh, your name and address, please?
Uh, my name is, uh, James Wu Chen, twenty-nine El Park Road, Princeton, New Jersey. Uh, New Jersey's, uh, zero-eight-five-four-zero. Okay. I'm a principal of, um, uh, JWC Architect Engineer.
Uh, thank you. I would ask that Mr. Chen be, uh, uh, accepted as a, uh, an expert in, uh, in architecture. He was previously, I believe, at the last, uh, hearing we had on this.
Uh, I see. I normally call him temporarily for the board of the church.
I, I believe he did at the, at the original temporary use, but, uh, uh, in any event, I would ask him, uh, to be, uh, recognized as a, uh, as a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey.
And you're a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I think you can accept him as our, uh, expert architect.
Yes, he's fine, yes.
Okay. Uh, okay, so, uh, first question, James, is, uh, you heard my introduction. Uh, is everything that I said in my introduction accurate as you are, uh, uh, as you are aware of the site?
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh, we do have two reports, and so we'll go over those two quick, uh, very quickly, one of which is a, I'm calling it the tri-party report, the one that's signed by, uh, by Dawn Corcoran-Jo Herrera and John Mizrahi. Uh, that was dated August twenty-first, twenty-twenty-four. I want to just go through that with you very briefly. Uh, so the first question was testimony should be provided as to why we are seeking an extension. Um, I think I covered that in my introduction, but we need that additional time to get the site plan together. Uh, and we feel that we should be able to do that by the end of the year. Is that correct, James?
That is correct, yes, sir.
Okay, uh, number two says the previous approval, um, uh, uh, indicated that there would be no storage of any hazardous materials within, uh, the building. We would, uh, agree, number one, there is no hazardous materials, and we would agree to continue not storing any hazardous materials. And if they granted us the ability to utilize the other building in this, in a similar matter, we would do the same and, and uh, agree as a condition that there would be no hazardous materials. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes, sir.
Excellent. Uh, number three is indicating that the application has to be approved by the Township Fire Commissioner. Um, same as we did with the first building, you agree that we will have to work with the Township's Fire Commissioner to make sure that, um, every, all the, you know, it's up to fire code and that, uh, it is up to his satisfaction in terms of safety. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and one of the comments here is it indicates from the demolition plans that, uh, the fire suppression systems are proposed to be removed. It's not the entirety of the fire suppression systems. If you can just very briefly explain what we are proposing in that other building, um, uh, to do, uh, as part of the demolition.
I'm happy to. The building number one had a two-story, currently is a two-story structure. And, uh, each story had about thirteen feet of ceiling high from the floor to the structure deck. And given the mechanical space and the, the res- uh, drop the ceiling, and the clearance of the structure is not enough for the client to store the material what they're seeking for. So we are proposing to remove part of the second-floor structure, entire, a portion of the structure, enable to us to provide a higher ceiling. And, uh, in fact, we'll be losing about twenty thousand square foot of the area, uh, by doing so. Um, that's the reason the second floor, uh, the, the first floor portion of the sprinkler system, eh, will be removed in conjunction with the structural removal.
Okay, but...
But the, but the second floor, uh, sprinkler system will remain, and it will be modified to provide adequate, uh, fire protection for the entire facility.
Okay, so we're not removing the entire fire suppression system, and we are going to make sure that it is, uh, um, modified and working properly for the interior fit-out that we're proposing, correct?
That is correct, yes, sir.
Okay, and I believe the last question was just a timing schedule so that, to ensure that no further extensions are necessary. Um, what I said was correct, that we anticipate that we will absolutely be, uh, putting in a full site plan application by the end of the year. And given that, we won't need to request any additional extensions. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes, sir.
Okay, I want to jump over to Mr. Chadwick's, uh, report dated September fifth. Um, there were, uh, three comments. I think we've pretty much hit upon all of them, but I just want to, uh, double...
You have to.
Excellent, thank you, Mr. Chadwick. Um, I have no further questions at this time of, uh, of, uh, Mr. Chen.
Okay. Does any board members have any questions or comments? Hearing none?
I got, I got one. Um, you mentioned the fire commissioners. I believe it's the fire marshal who has to, uh, approve everything. Um, just to make sure, um, is that what we're, we're talking about?
We will, uh, we will certainly work with any, uh, fire official that has jurisdiction. I believe it was the, I believe it's the marshal, uh, it's, uh, Piscataway's fire marshal that I, I believe has the, the title. So I apologize, I, I was just reading...
There's, there's two jurisdictions, the fire subcode official and the fire marshal.
Okay.
And we, we agree to satisfy, obviously, any, any official that has any jurisdiction over those safety concerns.
That's all I have, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Mr. Hillary, I, I, on behalf of the township, uh, a concern that's been raised about the amount of truck traffic that would be involved if they end up storing things in both building and building one without a site plan. I'm not sure that we've heard any evidence from the applicant that justifies taking the storage to building one. Because that would vastly increase the amount of storage space and truck traffic. We don't have a site plan here. Perhaps the applicant can address that concern.
Uh, certainly, uh, uh, James, in, in terms of, uh, what we're asking to do to fit out the building, uh, one is basically what we, uh, is the same thing that we did to building two originally, which is modify it to just store items there, not to...
Your total is forty-eight seventy-five.
Not to utilize it as a distribution center where items are gonna be going in and then going out and going in and going out. This is purely going to... This is purely going to be a, uh, static storage usage until and if at full site plan approval to allow any other uses on that site. To allow any other uses on that site, is that correct?
That is correct. The main distribution, receiving and assemble and the shipping. It will be on the building number three, which is, we are waiting for the finalized site plan. And which we just got a clear, completed the new flood study. So we have a clear finished elevation to complete the building design.
Correct, so no, no type of, there, there's not gonna be any sort of distribution or any sort of truck traffic coming in and out of the site. Until or when and until we would get any sort of site plan approval. This would merely be to fit out that. The building one during that, during the time period of, of site plan approval and just use it to store materials. Because if we weren't storing them there, they would have to be stored someplace offsite, which would be an additional cost, an additional. Burden and would ultimately have to come on to the site anyway at some point in the future. So doing it now versus doing it then doesn't actually generate any additional truck traffic than what would be. We would essentially just be postponing that down the road.
Yeah, your statement is absolutely correct.
One of the elements of a temporary use permit is the applicant should have a legitimate effect upon the use of the asset. I don't think that the applicant has demonstrated satisfaction of that aspect in order to use a second building for storage. Clearly, to store things there, there have to be deliveries. That will vastly increase the number of deliveries to the site. And without site plan approval, the local link to that aspect of the temporary use ordinance. I have no objection to raising the extension of the temporary use.
I, I think I got what you said, Mr. Caneley. You were cutting in and out there a little bit, but I think I understood what you said. James, if I could, if I could, and I don't know if my, is, is the client on the call as well? I just want to confirm if they're on as well, just so that they can hear.
Hey, Debbie and Thomas, are you both there?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay.
Thomas is not here.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that you were on. So just so that you understand, I believe what Mr. Caneley is indicating is that. The township is not necessarily comfortable at this point under a temporary use permit. To extend the amount of storage and the amount of work being done on the site from. One building to two buildings without a full site plan coming in. And so what, I think what the suggestion is, is that they will grant the extension of the existing temporary use permit. So that we can still utilize the building, building number two, that was already fit out and is already storing materials. But they want to wait until we get a full site plan in so that they can fully assess the site before they're allowing any additional. Construction and storage on the site. I believe that's what Mr. Caneley was indicating. I apologize if I, if I've misinterpreted that at any point.
No, you are correct. I'm sorry, I was forgetting.
That's all right.
Yes.
Would you be, would you be okay with that, considering that we're, that we're very close to being able to put that site plan application in? I think it makes, essentially is the difference between maybe a couple of months at most. Is that, is that something that's maybe acceptable?
Yes, that's, that's okay.
Okay, so, Mr. Caneley, I believe that if the board were, were. Able to grant the extension of the existing zoning permit, we would be agreeable to, to that. And not extending it to the other building, and that'll be more motivation to get the site plan in even quicker.
And, and that addresses all my legal concerns about this application.
I don't know if there's any other board members that have anything, or if.
Okay, does anyone from the public have any questions or comments?
No one, Chairman?
Okay, I make a motion to approve this application. Can I get a second?
Second.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Regio?
Yes.
Mr. Blount?
Yes.
Mr. Hidaka?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
Mr. Ali?
Yes.
And Chairman Teller.
Yes.
Mr. Arch, we memorialize this in our next meeting and send a copy to you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Okay, moving on to item number ten, twenty-four dash ZB dash zero five slash oh six V. Solair America Limited Liability Company.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Peter Chicanias. I am an attorney at the law firm of Highland Levin Shapiro. My office represents the applicant of Solair America LLC. This is for the property located at five fifty-five New Durham Road, also known as block eight five zero one, lot forty-five point zero two. There's currently a Wawa on this site, the convenience store and the, the gas canopies, obviously. And the application that is before the board tonight is very, very simple. We're simply looking to install. Solar panels on the gas canopy of that Wawa. Technically, because the Wawa itself is not a permitted use within the. The R-ten zone, which is where this property is located, we will need a use variance in, in the sense that we're expanding. An existing non-conformal use, and we need a variance from section twenty-one dash five zero one. In addition, solar panels, according to the township's code, are conditionally permitted as. On any, on all principal structures within the township, I believe, or in certain, in this particular zone. However, this is being installed, installed on a, an accessory structure. So we need a variance from section twenty-one dash one zero one four point three A. I would note again that this is a really a very simple application. Again, we're simply installing solar panels on top of that gas canopy. I would note that per Mr. Chadwick's review letter dated August twenty-third of this year. It notes that the solar is an inherently beneficial use, which typically takes care of the positive criteria relative to. A variance of any kind. And it says in his letter, quote, "Only negative impacts are to be addressed, and there are no negative impacts," which we would agree with one hundred percent. I would also note that in the letter from the Division of Engineering and Planning and Development dated August twenty-second of this year. It says, quote, "The proposed solar installation is an inherently beneficial use," so it also acknowledges that the positive criteria is essentially met here. And then it says, quote, "Will have a minimal visual impact on the site." With that said, I do have one witness with me here today. That is Mr. John Scorsone, who is the principal over at Solair America. John, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me? Could you raise your right hand?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you. Your name and address, please?
My name is John Scorsone, President of Solair America. My address is two oh seven South State Road, Upper Arby, Pennsylvania, one nine oh eight two.
Thank you.
Okay, John, we've done this a few times in a couple of different townships, so you know the drill. Please introduce yourself, describe your role at Solair America, and let the board know what we're looking to do here.
Good evening. My name is John Scorsone. I am President of Solair America. We are partnered with Wawa to install solar on all gas canopies in New Jersey. We currently have developed over a hundred and thirty-five already in the state. And as Peter alluded to, we've done quite a few of these meetings in the last few years. And what we're looking to do, per our contract with Wawa and our partnership, is to install, utilize the gas canopies. To produce renewable energy for the stores and exclusively the stores. Our canopies usually, our solar canopy project, pretty much, on average, uses about, provides about twenty percent of the Wawa power.
Okay, and describe a bit how the, you know, how the process works, how the, the canopies are installed. And, you know, I think they're, they're gonna be located about, what was it, I think, six inches technically above the, or what is the measurement there?
That's, that's exactly right. So they are attached directly to the existing roof, which is a. A, a metal roof, a standing seam roof. So our racking is attached to the metal, to the metal roof, and the panels are attached to the racking. Approximately, it follows the exact angle of the roof. It does not protrude over it or in any, on the sides, the top to the bottom. It stays within the footprint of the roof. Proxim about six inches off the existing roof between the, the roof and the, and the panel.
Okay, and there's, there's no danger of any kind of glare or anything like that with the panels?
No, so that's a misnomer we get a lot in these meetings. Solar panels actually absorb light, they do not reflect light. So yes, there is no reflection whatsoever. It's actually the exact opposite. And also, we use all existing infrastructure, so there's no new infrastructure going in. So all current conduit that's required for the project is already installed. Per the, the construction of the, of the building, pre-installed, so we're not adding anything except for the panels.
And all wiring and things like that, that's located underground, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, I think that concludes my direct testimony. We would invite questions from the board and the board professionals.
Could someone address the rest of the comments in September dated August twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-four, and we address number one.
Mr. Caneley, if I'm pronouncing this correctly, I'm having trouble hearing you. You're kind of breaking up.
Yeah, broke up with me too.
I apologize for your address, Mr. Mishrahi's report dated August twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-four.
Yeah, if you could, if you could address my report that I signed with Dawn and Joe.
Yeah, sure. So the, the first item, I think it just, again, I've quoted it already. It mentions that this will have. It's inherently beneficial use and will have minimal visual impact on site. I can say, and John, you can confirm, that the applicant has no problem with item number two. Securing all necessary approvals and permits through the building department and the fire commissioner. That's no problem.
Agreed.
Items three through five are a bit tougher, simply because that's a bit beyond the applicant. We are not the owners of the property. Wawa does own the property, so it's tough for us to say that we'll. Remove any dead or missing landscaping, can fix the broken concrete or any fade striving, simply because it's not within our power to do so.
If you have a relationship with Wawa, then you can tell Wawa that they need to take care of anything. Yes, so I can answer those three. So our construction will not remove. Or damage any existing landscaping whatsoever. It would also not damage or remove or any. Existing asphalt or concrete. We are not in any, we're not adding anything to the site except for panels to the roof. So those items would not be an issue for the construction whatsoever. None. It is not applicable to this installation.
No, but the items remain necessary to clean up the site. And to the extent that Wawa wants this happen, they should agree. And I'm not sure you're gonna get.
Well, of course, well, I'm just saying it's a moot point because none of those.
John, very quickly, it's, it's, we're, we're not saying no. Again, if the board wants.
We're not saying no.
Wants to condition the approval upon those three items, that's.
We agree.
Fine, we can't necessarily disagree with that, but that's, that's the board's pleasure.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Great.
And I think that addresses all of the comments on both of the, both of the review letters.
I don't have any further comment.
Okay, does any board members have any questions or comments?
Yes, he did say that they were complying with. The should be fire marshal, not the inspector's fire marshal in regards to the installation or anything with the township.
Yes, any.
Is that correct?
Through the building department or the fire marshal, fire commissioner, whatever the appropriate positional term is there, we're at, we're, we'd absolut, absolutely be agree with that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other board members have any questions or comments? Does anyone from the public have any questions or comments?
I keep muting myself, I'm sorry. No one, Chairman?
Okay, I make a motion to approve this application. Can I ask for a second?
Where am I, hold on. Mr. Patel?
Yeah.
Mr. Regio?
Yes.
Mr. Blount?
Yes.
Mr. Hidaka?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
Mr. Ali? There he is. He's driving. Mr. Ali?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. And Mr. Chairman Teller?
Yes.
Your application's been approved. We memorialize it in our next meeting and send a copy to you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, everybody on the board.
Okay, good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Item number twelve, twenty-four dash B B dash forty-two slash forty-three V. Fox and Fox Development LLC.
I thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Kevin Morris, attorney at Woodbridge, New Jersey. I'm appearing this evening on behalf of the applicant Fox and Fox Development LLC. Subject property is block fourteen oh one, lot two, located on nine Stelton Road in Piscataway. The applicant is proposing to demolish the existing structure at the subject property. And to construct two separate townhouse buildings. Each of those buildings will contain six units. Those units will be two-bedroom units, so in the total, there would be the construction of two, excuse me, twelve two-bedroom townhouse units. I did submit our affidavits of publication and mailing previously. I wanted to confirm that they have been received and that they are in order so that the board has jurisdiction to proceed this evening.
They were received. They are in order to give the board has jurisdiction to proceed.
Thank you. I have two witnesses this evening. One will be Stephen Fox, who is testifying on behalf of the applicant, one of the principals. I have Angelo Valletudo, who will be testifying both as our professional engineer and our professional planner. If Steve Fox could please be sworn.
Mr. Fox, could you raise your right hand? For the testimony you're about to give to me the truth?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Your name and address, please?
My address is nine forty Amboy Avenue, Suite one oh one, Edison, New Jersey, oh eight eight three seven.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Fox, you are our principal or one of the owners of the applicant Fox and Fox Development LLC, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
On, and the applicant is a licensed builder in the state of New Jersey, is that right?
Yes, it is.
And you are also, and you are also a licensed realtor in the state of New Jersey, is that correct?
That is also correct.
And you have been involved in both of those businesses for, I think, about thirty-two years now?
Yes.
All right, now the business of the company, and you have a business partner, Bob Fox, that's the two Xs, who you've been in business this entire time with, correct?
Correct.
You, and you're in the business of two things. Number one, you are builders of new homes. And buildings predominantly in Middlesex County, is that right?
Correct.
And in addition to that, you also have residential real estate holdings. I understand about a hundred and fifty units. That you various different buildings in Middlesex County that you self-manage and run as part of your business. Is that also correct?
That is correct.
Right now, you had the pleasure of testifying before this board back in two thousand and eighteen. The board may be, may recall. At a property right up the street, nineteen Stelton Road, not far from this subject property. Where you, you received approval and built a beautiful mixed-use building with residential units above and commercial use below, correct?
Yes, sir.
And that building has been up and running for years, and I understand it's been very well received in the Piscataway community, is that right?
Absolutely.
Now, the proposal before the board this evening is for the construction of, as I said, twelve two-bedroom townhouses in total, is that right?
Yes.
And these will be units that will be offered for sale, is that correct, at market?
For sale, yep.
All right, now. I understand that, that you have a color rendering. Our architect wasn't available this evening, but can you share a screen and pop up a color rendering of the?
Give me a second.
I see that you're as computer literate as I am.
Kevin, I played with it for ten minutes and I called help. Okay, is that good, Kev?
I can't see anything, so I don't know.
Did, Laura, could you allow me to share a screen?
Yeah, you can. You just said share screen on the bottom. It should be able to come right up.
We did.
Yeah, I'll do it again.
We'll do it again. Share.
There we go.
Oh, good. Okay, so this is. One of the six unit buildings. This is the front facade. And Kevin and board members, I could scroll when you want me to scroll, Kevin, okay?
Yeah, so this obviously gives a depiction of some of the colors, although it's, it doesn't come across exactly as, as great as when I look at it as a PDF. Flip over if you could for the board, just.
Before you, before you do that, is this the same rendering that was filed with the board? I don't recall shutters on the front facade.
Correct.
No, so thank you, Mr. Chadwick. No, so thank you, Mister Chadwick. Uh, I. We should have this marked as A one for identification if that would be acceptable to uh uh board council. All right, so Steve, uh, just for the record, uh, we're getting ahead of ourselves. What you have produced here is A one. This is, from what I understand, a color rendering of the architectural plan. That was submitted in this before the board. However, certain enhancements have been added to what was previously submitted to the board. Is that correct?
Yes, it is. According to Mister Chadwick's letter, we applied uh every, all of his comments to this new rendering.
All right, so for example, there are shutters on the front of the building now that were added from the original plan. Is that correct?
Correct.
And I believe you have some side elev- elevations. If you could flip to that.
Also, also the left and the right side, we added more uh windows um as per Mister Chadwick's comments.
Okay.
Are there shutters there as well?
Yes, sir. Yep, they're right there.
Good thought.
Yep.
Okay, so uh thi- this is a depiction of what we intend on building. Now, look, our engineer is going to testify uh regarding the site details, and he will go through the bulk. Of the three uh professional reports that we have, but uh some of uh the items require your testimony, so I'm going to direct. Uh, our attention to the uh in-house memo. Of the Division of Engineering. That's dated September twenty-third. Uh, item four, uh. You've confirmed the units will be for sale. Uh, please tell us how uh trash and recycling will occur. That would be item six of that memo.
Yes, what we plan on doing uh with the trash and recycling is um, of course, this will be a uh for-sale condo unit. So there'll be a condo association, and with that, we will hire our uh garbage company that maintains all of our properties. Will provide one garbage pal and one recycling pal that homeowners will store in their garages. And nights before pickup, they will be put in a paver pad area right outside their driveway.
Okay. Now, uh, moving on to item uh thirteen of that memo. There was a request for the pavers between the driveways uh being replaced with landscaping. We can accommodate most of that. Is that correct?
Absolutely. We'll, we'll change it over to landscaping, but like I said, we just want a little bit of a pad to be able to place those. Recycling and garbage pals on for the days that they need to be picked up.
Okay, so uh, we can make that adjustment as you've stated. Item fourteen of the memo talks about additional amenities, a lock and grill, some tables and benches near the gazebo. Uh, is the applicant prepared? Uh, should the board look favorably to add those additional items to the satisfaction of the board?
Absolutely. We think, we think that's a great idea also.
And you're willing to coordinate the gazebo uh. Color scheme in a manner to complement the architecture of the two buildings to be worked through with the uh municipal officials. Is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Right, and then item fifteen, I think you've sort of covered it already, and this is also dovetails into Mister Chadwick's memo. But uh. Th- this is some color, uh, some additional items, and if the board looked favorably on the application, Mister Fox, would the applicant prepared to uh? Take what you started already and otherwise finalize this in terms of the color schemes, shutters and so forth to the satisfaction of the uh. The uh staff's concerns?
Yes, definitely.
Okay, now, um. And for the record. This was produced to address. The uh comments three, four, and five of Mister Chadwick's memo dated September seventeenth. And uh our professionals, again, will, our professional will cover the rest of this. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right, so, look, I have no further questions, ladies and gentlemen, at this time of Mister Fox. He will be available uh through the entire hearing. Uh, some of these were uh testimony items he needed to complete with regard to the memos. Mister Valletudo. Is going to testify about the site plan and the rest of the memos, so. You want to have Mister Fox stand down and ask them questions now or wait until we complete uh the rest of the engineering presentation? And hold questions, we leave that up to you.
Hey, that's fine.
Okay, so then, uh, you can stand down for the moment, Mister Fox, and stand by, and I will next call Angelo Valletudo. Who happens to be sitting next to me in my office, because he's another computer-literate person, and he figured he, he wouldn't have to get blamed if he couldn't log in, so. I've got him with me, and I would ask that he be sworn, please.
It's coming across unclear, but.
You swear that the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
Yes, sir, I do. Angelo.
Your name and address, please.
Sure. Angelo J. Valletudo, V A L E T U T T O. Four twenty-four Amboy Avenue, Woodbridge, New Jersey, oh seven oh nine five. Licensed professional engineer, licensed professional planner, state of New Jersey.
Yes, I found them both accepted, yes.
All right, so then.
Thank you.
So you've, you're accepting me as a, as an expert in both professional engineering and professional planning, just so the record's clear, and we thank you. All right, so Mister Valletudo, you prepared the uh site plan that is before the board this evening. Is that correct?
I did with the assistance of a licensed surveyor and, of course, Mister Fox and the architect.
All right, can you please describe the property as it exists and the proposed development?
Sure. The property as is shown on sheet one of the site plan that was submitted is on the easterly side of Stelton Road. Having a frontage of a hundred and thirty-four point three-six feet in the front. And it narrows only slightly at the back, uh, easterly side, one thirty-three fifty-six. Similar, it's not a complete square, so the depth is, varies from two hundred and fourteen point eight-eight feet. On its northerly side, uh, down up to two hundred and twenty feet on its southerly side. The property did have a structure on it that was uh removed. And there is also fairly extensive paving throughout the property. Uh, as part of the application, we intend to uh demolish all of the site improvements. And as is shown on sheet number two, and as presented by you in the opening comments and Mister Fox. Were proposing two structures um that pretty much mirror each other. With uh having the uh six units, each two bedrooms, each being three stories. And that the uh area of which is a center aisle of twenty-four feet. Whereas all of the units will have access into a one-car garage and additional parking space outside of it. Uh, in their driveway, there's also going to be a total of five additional parking spaces. One being the van-accessible handicap spaces at the northeast. Or excuse me, northwest section of our parking lot, and on the flip side, on the uh northeast side is two spaces. And then there are two spaces that are proposed that are in the proximity of the gazebo. Um, that was as submitted, however, as is usually the case when we go through the board. Both with the board professionals and then the board itself, uh, will be making further enhancements so as to satisfy the comments.
All right. Now, egress and ingress to the site is uh solely from Stelton Road. Is that correct?
That is correct. It's in the similar proximity of the southerly uh portion of the property where there now is. And as part of the board approval, uh, we are seeking, obviously. All of the site improvements of curbing, uh, paving, uh, landscaping, lighting. As well as everything within Stelton Road, which is a county road. Uh, and once, if we receive the benefit of the approval from the board, we will immediately move on to. Entering the portal of Middlesex County to seek their approval. As they are the only outside agency that we will require. Uh, once we get hopefully the approval from the board this evening.
All right, generally drainage to the site, how's that handled?
Drainage is handled with regard to internally, there's going to be a, a seepage design that we acknowledge. Is under the purview of both the uh, uh, Joe Herrera from the minister, the municipality. As well as Charlie, Harley, who has also authored a report that we will be uh addressing later.
All right, now, uh. Will there be any negative drain of impact, impacts on adjacent or neighboring properties as a result of this proposed development of the property?
No, sir, none whatsoever. The design, as will be further reviewed and approved by Mister Harley. Will prove that we are handling our drainage on-site within the seepage pits. Uh, and Mister Fox, as he is typically is ahead of his time. He's already gotten us the various information with percolation tests and all, so we can provide that to both Mister Herrera and Mister. Harley for purposes of their review and analysis to show that we meet all of the standards that are required. For what we are proposing.
Right now, uh, there was a comment in one of the memos about lighting on the site. If you could touch on that, please.
Sure, lighting is, is shown on, what else? The lighting and landscaping sheet and shows the coverage and comments. And maybe if you would like, we'll go through it, will comply in total to satisfy the uh comment by. The professional or professionals who had uh made comment regarding the lighting.
And with regard to the number of parking spaces, I understand that twenty-eight spaces are required. This application provides twenty-nine parking spaces, so we're compliant with the parking ordinance and recess. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
All right, so I'd like to direct your attention to the various memos. Uh, first. Uh, your attention to the September twenty-five, twenty-twenty-four memo issued by uh uh D N R, Mister Harley. We had the opportunity to review this memo together with the applicant today. Is that right?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
All right, uh, number one, you can just comment.
Well. Do we want to go one by one, or do we want to just say we can comply with one through six? In total, should we see the benefit of the approval? With regard to number seven and number eight, they're both statements of fact. With regard to the um, number nine, we will comply in total. We thought that we did have all of the proper construction details, but um, we either flip-flopped one or whatever. But we would comply in total. Similar with regard to number ten, we'll provide the information in total. Which is after construction showing the various uh. Conditions as they exist after construction. And then number eleven, we'll comply, we'll meet with the uh engineering supervisor, Mister Herrera, I believe. Uh, with regard to if there is a logistic plan being offered, and that's something we'll work in conjunction. With Mister Fox, who, as you heard already, has worked within, I guess, just about two hundred feet or less. Of the subject property, uh, and has the experience and certainly uh. Will be able to satisfy that in total, and then the pre-construction meeting is also something we'll comply in total. And number thirteen is the outside agencies, which we would comply, or if not, um. Provide sufficient proof to Mister Harley that there is no need for an approval from that particular agency.
All right, so we have the entire contents of that memo covered then. Let me ne- direct your attention next to the memorandum. Of the uh Piscataway Division of Engineering. That's dated September twenty-third. Uh, number one, affordable housing obligations. I can tell the board that the applicant has spoken to the appropriate municipal official about uh. Its uh requirement for affordable housing. We're compl- we are prepared to comply with that. Uh, items two and three, Mister Valletudo, we will comply with those.
We are, we're both compliant. Uh, Mister Charlie, Mister Harley's already, already did, and then. It makes reference to a fire commissioner, but I, I know that there are typically two individuals. One person who does the inspection of a site prior to its build, and then once it's uh in play with the building permit. It's handled with the fire inspector within the municipality. Number four was already uh testified that it was going to be for sale. Number five, you indicated. That we meet the recess uh parking um standards. Number six, Mister. Fox had already indicated with regard to how to trash and recycling. Uh, number seven and eight, we will comply in total, and those are with regard to the fiber optic conduits. So that the city will be prepared that any fiber optic optics can be installed underground. We will comply in total with number nine, ten, and eleven, and I believe Mister um. Twelve and thirteen, Mister Fox has already testified.
Twelve actually is for you. Uh, if you can just con- confirm as to whether a TWA permit is necessary for this application.
I'm sorry, we, we skipped over number twelve. The answer is no. Um, with the D E P for TWA. You would have to either have a eight-inch pipe come into your property. Uh, or to have an additional flow of eight thousand gallons per day. Under the twelve two-bedroom townhouse units, it's two hundred and twenty-five gallons per day based on the. State requirements. It comes up to only twenty-seven hundred gallons, and that's for the new uh proposal. So we're under eight thousand, and we don't even have to require to get a credit for what was on the prior. Which was only just under two hundred and seventy, but we're well under the eight thousand trigger for a D E P TWA permit.
Okay, and then items thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen, Mister Fox has already testified to, and. We've uh made our representations with regard to that, and you've already touched on. Uh, we'll submit to the Middlesex County Planning Board should we receive the benefit of approval. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Almost immediately knowing Mister Fox, he has me on speed dial and probably call me, hopefully, once we get our approval. To move that quick to get it through.
All right, now with regard to Mister Chadwick's memo, that is dated September seventeenth. Uh, when we're concluding or concluding your engineering testimony, you will present. Planning testimony to address item one. Item two, again, the affordable housing, the applicant is prepared to comply with that.
Can I interrupt one second? You said you had met with someone at the township. You come out with a just shy of three units. Are you just going to round up?
I didn't have that discussion. Uh, I know that it's been suggested that we provide. One uh, one moderate, one low, and then there's going to be a uh monetary payment to satisfy the obligation. Uh, whatever it ultimately turns out to be, we will comply with the uh requirements by the.
Did you discuss with your client what that monetary payment?
Yes.
Be, because I think, I did the calculus, two point eight units. It's fifteen percent of twelve, right?
Right.
Okay, which comes out two point eight. If you're going to pay point eight of a unit, you're talking about a substantial number.
Yeah, I don't know what was uh, the, the, if the discussions were finalized, but again. Uh, suffice to say, the applicant will work with the municipal official that orchestrates the affordable housing.
Okay.
To, to that person's satisfaction, understanding there is going to be a monetary payment in addition to the unit designations.
I'm sorry, Jim. I could not.
That's, that's my understanding as well.
Okay, if you stay closer to your mic, it seems like it's clearer.
Okay, try that.
Yeah, that's better.
Okay, uh, all right, thank you, Mister Chadwick. Now, items three, four, and five, we've already talked about with Mister Fox and. The color rendering and what we're prepared to do with that. Item six, Mister Valletuno, you'll adjust any uh.
Yep, number six, we will comply with regard to number seven. We will shift the two parking spaces back to align them. Pretty much with the parking spaces for the building in the back, so that those two spaces won't have as lengthy a backup. Or make it more of a challenge for drivers. That will also have the benefit of uh further decreasing our. Pavement impervious area and be able to uh.
Provide a little more outdoor space is what it really does.
Yes.
Yeah.
So we're prepared to do that, and then nine, eight, item eight, the lighting plan. Uh, I don't know that we showed illumination on the front of the building.
Now, what, we will comply. Typically, it's what I like to prefer to uh as mood lighting. That the architect tells us what the lights are, and then based on that, we'll show them on our plan. Um, so as to show all the lighting, not only for the parking and the access roads. But also for the front of the buildings based on what the architect has designed.
We're not going to put any spotlights on these buildings, right?
No, sir.
Good.
As I call the mood lighting.
Okay, yeah, I know what you're saying.
Thank you.
All right, so that would conclude uh our engineering. Alright, so that would conclude, uh, our engineering or physical testimony about the site. Uh, again, Mr. Fox and/or Mr. Valletuno, if we have questions now. Uh, and then I will be calling Mr. Valletuno, asking him to switch gears and present his planning testimony. So I don't know if there's any questions at this point. The board would like us to entertain. Or I'll move on.
I did have one or two points that I'd like to receive some clarification on. Uh, specifically from the Division of Engineering Planning and Development Staff Memorandum. Uh, in regards to items three and item six, would it be possible to generate a, a truck turning diagram? Proving that there's sufficient space for a, uh, fire truck to get in and out of the site? As well as a trash and recycling vehicle?
Most definitely.
Fantastic.
Yes.
Um, in regards to item fifteen, was the building height addressed in the comments? Uh, revisions based on Mr. Chadwick's comments? Or are you still proposing thirty-eight-point-zero-nine feet in height?
Well, the building height has not been changed. Uh, we have started to make some alterations, i.e. shutter, some different window to add, uh, to add some, uh, improved interest, as it were. And I don't think we're finalized yet, but obviously this applicant is prepared to make adjustments. And I think, uh, as he has in the past, uh, he can work with the, uh, municipal officials to finalize the, uh, that part of it, the facade, the colors and so forth, but the height remains the same.
Okay, and my last, uh, my last comment was regards to number five. Uh, I recognize the testimony identifying that the standards have been met for parking onsite. I was hoping to receive a little bit more clarity on the times of extenuating need for celebrations, um, family events, things of that nature, where there'd be a temporary increased need where you envision the parking facilities for that to be.
Kevin, you want me to jump in?
Yeah, Steve, if you could handle that, because you have tremendous experience in this county, but it would, you built other townhouses like this. You have commercial properties, you have residential units. So, yeah, if you could follow up on that, Steve.
Yes, um, so within, with regard to that issue, in our experience, and we just recently got approval for Greenbrook for eighty-five residential units, um, that's sitting over ten thousand square foot of retail. And there was a big controversy about the E V credit that is going on and whether there's enough parking or not. And it's the same answer that we've experienced, that these situations tend to work themselves out. So as far as celebrations, as far as parties, graduations, and so forth, people that are looking to buy these units are going to go into our unit complex. They're going to see driveways, they're going to see the amount of parking, there's going to be signs visible for guest parking. And people that live that lifestyle probably won't buy this unit. And in our experience, with the square footages of these units, um, and the price point, um, generally, those type of people will find other means of celebrating, whether it's out at a restaurant or other people's homes. I live in a little larger home, being fifty-six years old, and, you know, putting in my time. And I know my niece and nephew, a lot of times have their celebrations at my house or my parents' house than in their eighties. So it ends up working itself out.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, so if there's no further questions at this point, uh, with the board's permission, I'll have Mr. Valletudo switch gears and ask him some, uh, ask him to reduce his planning analysis.
Does any other board members have any questions or comments?
Alright, so Mr. Valletudo, uh, you've also now had the opportunity to, uh, analyze proposed development from the standpoint of professional planning. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. That is correct.
I would ask you to detail your analysis, uh, your findings for the board, any opinions that you have, uh, reached or conclusions and the basis for those for the board's, uh, uh, digestion. Thank you.
As we usually do, and as is required when working with you and Mr. Fox, we go through the analysis of the application from, like I, you just asked the planning perspective, visited site, walked around the area. Latest being this morning, through the raindrops, reviewed the zoning ordinance and master plan, the New Jersey Municipal Land Use Law. And what I found in my last visitation, um, for tonight's meeting was there was a variety of uses. And one of the things that seemed to be, what appears is that a number of what I believe are the B P two business professional zone uses appear to be where most of the vacancies are. We do have, uh, I believe it was a three-family house on the opposite side of the street, closer to the next intersection. I think it's Lakeview, um, that was there. Across the street from there is an automobile shop. Um, as you continue down, there is a church, uh, property that at least has a sign up. There was no activity at all. Next to that's a funeral parlor. On our side of the street, next to us, is a veterinary hospital. Then we have on nineteen, uh, or between the vet, there's a building under construction. I can't tell what it's going to be for. Right now, all it is, is a concrete slab, and they have the pipes coming out. Uh, so I can't tell if it's for residential, and if it is, it's going to be, uh, for, uh, apartments or townhomes because of what I see as a layout. Then beyond that is the nineteen Stelton, which you had indicated, one that was built by the applicant. Uh, and then as you go further on, there are a number of residential, uh, single-family and small other business uses. Then there's a large property that appeared to be a school. And that is the one that has a number of, uh, signs up there for purposes of, uh, for people to come in and to occupy them. So there is a mixture. And then, of course, as you continue your Stelton towards, uh, going towards two-eighty-seven, that's where you're really getting to the heart of the business and retail type uses. Uh, the property, as we've been talking, is located in the B P two Business Professional Zone. Um, as has been identified in the professional reports and in your opening comments, the, uh, we're seeking a use variance approval since the proposal for the development of the property for townhouses is not listed as a permitted use in the zone, which is primarily the commercial use, um, in that, uh, B P zone. There's also the bulk variances that were approved, were being sought, uh, excuse me. Um, and they were identified in a report we had received from the zoning officer. First is with regard to the building height, where we have thirty-five feet is the maximum permitted. And what we're showing at the moment is thirty-eight-point-oh-nine. I know that Mr. Fox is in the process of modifying the side and all, but I do not believe, based on my conversation with him, that the thirty-eight-point-oh-nine feet is going to be modified. There is also with regard to front yard setback, principal building where twenty-five feet is the minimum required. There's a seventeen-point-five feet, uh, distance that is proposed to the landing on the porch. And then a fifteen-foot setback from the steps where it goes above what the ground is. With regard to the use variance, in my opinion, the requisite criteria exists to justify the applicant's request for the use variance approval under the positive criteria or special reasons. Also known by achieving the goal under the Municipal Land Use Law forty-colon-fifty-five D-dash-two. I offer the file, following our met, letter A to encourage the municipal action to guide the appropriate use or development of all lands in the state in a manner which will promote the public health, safety, morals, and general welfare. Letter C to provide adequate light, air, and open space. Letter G to provide sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of agricultural, residential, recreational, commercial, and industrial uses. And open space, both public and private, according to their respective environmental requirements in order to meet the needs of all New Jersey citizens. And letter M to encourage the coordination of the various public and private procedures and activities shaping land development with a view of lessening the cost of such development and to a more efficient use of the land. Uh, in my opinion, with the reasons they are advanced, the area where the subject property is located contains a number, as I've just testified earlier, of vacant uses and buildings that are in need, that in my opinion are what would be referred to as tired and in need to be updated and, and spruced up. And in my opinion, the proposed development would be a better use of the subject property and provides the infu- infusion of new buildings, which would be both appropriate and will be positive for surrounding area as well. The proposed density that we have, in my opinion, is consistent with the other, with other uses that are intended for the area as well as what have been developed. And the proposed construction will continue, in my opinion, to vitalize the, um, the, uh, area. By virtue of it meeting the side and rear setbacks, it meets the adequate light, air, and open space. Not the variances with regard to the front, but we are within that sixty-foot right-of-way. And that provides where there's no adverse impact, in my opinion, to any adjoining property from their, uh, light, air, and open space. In terms of particular suitability of site, subject property is located in an area that contains various other uses, which include the residential uses, as I indicated. And the example that it would not be testimony without utilizing it is the one that was developed by the applicant, located at Nineteen Stelton Road, which was approved by this board in twenty-nineteen, in which I had the honor of testifying as the planner on that application. It is in close proximity and functions well within the neighborhood. And we believe that with this one, if we received approval, it would act as a bookend and just add to what we hope will be a continued stimulus to the development of new structures or at minimum improvements to the existing structures that, uh, can utilize it. Um, property size, in my opinion, can appropriately accommodate the proposed development of townhouses with the only de minimis bulk variance relief, as we mentioned earlier. This section of Stelton Road and the subject property are located in close proximity to recreational areas and municipality. Um, within walking distance, I might, I might add, suggest. And that the, uh, for those reasons, in my opinion, the subject property is particularly suited for the proposed development of the townhouses. Uh, in terms of the enhanced quality of proof, as such, this application is not, in my opinion, inconsistent with the master plan and zoning ordinance, as has been proven by what the developer has done at Nineteen Stelton Road and with other residential uses in the area. With regard to negative criteria, in my opinion, the relet- requested relief can be granted, number one, without substantial detriment to the public good for the reasons I have testified. And then as been enhanced by the request and with which we will comply with the comments from the board's professionals, um, I see no detriment to the public good, no negative impact on any of the adjacent properties. Number two, without substantially impairing the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance, as the application is not inconsistent with the master plan and zoning ordinance for the reasons that I have stated. Nevertheless, um, the bulk variance is requested by the applicant or cognisal, cognizant of, on their C-two flexible C, because we meet that criteria as well as being, uh, subsumed under the higher standard of the use variance. Number one, it releases a specific piece of property, is oversized for the zone and can clean, completely handle the proposed development. Number two, that the purposes of the Municipal Land Use Law would be advanced by the deviation from the zoning ordinance requirement, again, as testified to earlier. And that the variances, in my opinion, can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. Uh, I see no detriment, only positive results by what we're trans- what the applicant is transforming the property into what we're proposing. And that the, number five, the benefits of the deviation would substantially outweigh any detriment. And again, my testimony is I see no detriment. Number six, that the requested variances will not substantially impair the intent and pur- purpose of the municipality's own plan and zoning ordinance, as I have testified to, uh, throughout my planning testimony.
Alright, so does that conclude your planning analysis, Mr. Valletudo?
It does, sir, yes.
Alright, so, uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, that would be our presentation for this application.
Okay, very well. Anyone from the public have any questions or comments?
Mr. Fox, can you unshare your screen, please? Thank you. No one, Chairman.
Okay, uh, I make a motion to approve this application. Can I please get a second?
Mr. Chairman, just before you make that motion, uh, the testimony did kind of circle around the master plan, uh, update that really says the new market area needs to be, uh, upgraded. It didn't say it needed redevelopment, but it needed to be upgraded. And clearly, the testimony goes to that theme for that area. Uh, I think it's important that we have that on the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chadwick.
Thank you.
Hey, we need a second, please.
Awesome.
Thank you, Mr. Patel. Okay, Mr. Patel?
Yeah.
Mr. Regio?
Yes.
Mr. Blount?
Yes.
Mr. Hidaka?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
Mr. Ellie?
Yes.
And Chairman Tillery?
Yes.
We will memorialize this in our next meeting until we can continue with the course.
Alright, thank you. Alright, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for your time. Everyone, have a pleasant evening.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item number fourteen, resolutions to be adopted.
The first resolution is published in the R, which is.
Jim, you froze.
The Mohammed.
Sir, we can't hear you.
We can't hear you. Do you want me to read the resolutions? Because we can't hear you at all, Jim.
Please, uh, I'm having.
You want me to read them?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, twenty-four Z B thirty-six V, Mohammed was approved. Mr. Tillery?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Regio?
Yes.
Mr. Blount? Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
Mr. Ellie?
Yes.
Second one, twenty-four Z B thirty-two, that's withdrawal for, um, Andrea and Bethia. Mr. Tillery?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Regio?
Yes.
Mr. Blount?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
And Mr. Ellie?
Yes.
Twenty-four Z B O A V, Orvin Patel, it was also withdrawn. Mr. Tillery?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Regio?
Yes.
Mr. Blount?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
Mr. Ellie?
Yes.
You approved twenty-four Z B forty-seven V, New York Verizon approved. Mr. Tillery?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Regio?
Yes.
Mr. Blount?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
Mr. Ellie?
Yes.
Twenty-four Z B thirty-seven V, Harish Patel, you approved the application. Mr. Tillery? Twenty-four Z B thirty-seven V, Harich Patel, you approved the application, Mr. Tillery?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Regio?
Yes.
Mr. Blount?
Yes.
Mr. Hadaka? Sorry, Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
And Mr. Ellie?
Yes.
And the last one is twenty-four Z B forty-six V, Atul Agarwal, you approved it, Mr. Tillery?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Regio?
Yes.
Mr. Blount?
Yes.
Mr. Hadaka?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
Mr. Ellie?
Yes.
Okay, those are all the resolutions, and we have adoption of minutes from the regular meeting of September twelfth, twenty-twenty-four, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
Exactly.
All right.
Nine on the nose. All right, thank you, everyone, have a good evening. And next meeting.